I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order of business, is there any additions to the agenda that you folks have in front of you? Hearing none? Can I have the approval of the agenda? It's all good for you folks? The conflict of interest, if anybody has any declaration of conflict of interest, if they can so announce it now. If not, if an item does come up, if you please declare it. Item number five is presentations. We do not have any presentations. I take it, Victoria?
No.
No.
Item number six, business arising from the minutes, 6.1, which is a standing item, is rural internet, and I'll pass that off to Victoria to give us an update.
So we've attached just the recent press release that Developed Nova Scotia put out, and largely the information that was contained in that you already knew, in terms of additional monies to fast-track preparatory work to get the projects that were announced in round one underway. And otherwise than that, I know that the work we're doing with our partners is moving forward. We have one application submitted, and we have another application ready to go in for round two of the Developed Nova Scotia bids.
Yeah, okay. Any, go ahead, Daniel.
I'm reading the press release, and I'm seeing their naming, like Caning and Kings County, Shelburne. I don't see, I don't see our project in Arcadia at Pinkney's Point being named, unless I'm missing it. Is there any further information for us?
So our project is going ahead, Councillor Allen. I think that they were naming specific projects where there was a requirement to pave the way for fast-tracking the installation. And in our project, there didn't appear to be any issues with respect to red tape or permits that would have held it up.
Okay. I'm still, I'm still waiting to see, just to see it happening, I guess, or just to see it started.
I know they're trying to put a push on to get them, I think there had been a timeline, Victoria, you can, you can correct me, I'll say 18 months, and now they're trying to get it down to, or going to look at a shorter time. They want to really hammer it hard and try to get some of these done as quickly as possible.
So when the round one Developed Nova Scotia bids were first opened up, the initial framework was around projects that could have been completed in 12 months, which would have been projects that could have been finished in 2020. Then, while the procurement process was open, there was some massaging of those requirements, and a little bit of loosening around that. When the projects were awarded, it appeared as though it was more like a 24-month window. And then with COVID-19, this additional money was designed to get shovels in the ground. And so where there were barriers, where internet service providers were indicating that they couldn't get to work because of certain barriers, that money was meant to help address the issues in those barriers and see them resolved as quickly as possible. So we're still expecting our project to be completed by the end of this calendar year, for sure. It's my understanding, in fact, in June or July. So I just made myself a note, Mr. Warden, to reach out to our internet service provider and get a sense of when we can expect to see that construction begin and end.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that, Madam CAO. I have people that are calling. They know the announcement was made. And of course, people without internet that are hearing us coming are starting to get a little antsy and curious as to when they will start seeing you.
Well, I believe it's been a blessing in disguise, as they would say. The COVID has made, because of the restrictions on travel and for people to stay at home, the internet has proven that it is a way to do, do business from home, do your job from home, and also to entertain at home. So if it hadn't been for COVID, we'd probably take the 18, it would probably take the 18 months to do it. But I think because of COVID, they're really putting a push on to try and get these all done. Councillor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do still have two concerns. And one is that the quality of the internet that we've been receiving, and I know Councillor Cunningham would agree with me, that the internet has been up and down like a yo-yo. The service has not been wonderful. And second, although we're having these new projects with internet, we still have cell service issues around this end of the province, where there are dead spots and areas where you cannot get cell service. And to me, that's of prime importance for safety concerns.
That is, go ahead, Councillor LeBlanc.
Have we heard anything more about the new budget that was given out? Any more information on that, on the, what was it, 130 million or whatever?
Are you, are you talking about the federal dollars that were announced, Councillor LeBlanc?
I thought it was the provincial. No?
So, yep, yep. So there's, there's three things happening. There are projects that have been announced under Developed Nova Scotia's round one procurement process, which, which is being funded through dollars from the Nova Scotia Internet Trust, which is what I think you're referring to.
Right.
And the federal government, through the CRTC, has, has a competition that just recently closed, and we have a submission in under that. And now Developed Nova Scotia has a second round of projects being competed for through the Nova Scotia Internet Trust, which I think is what you're referring to. So the, the dollars are flowing, they're just not flowing very quickly.
Okay. And have you heard anything from, from the Argyle side? Are they, are they doing anything there?
So they competed in the first round, they competed in the first round with Developed Nova Scotia, and they weren't awarded any projects. They, they are expected to have projects awarded in either the CRTC round or in the second round of Developed Nova Scotia. There was a significant project completed within the jurisdiction of the municipality of Argyle just before the Developed Nova Scotia projects started to open up. And so that impacted the number of households there that were deemed to be served. So they're, they had a, they had a project happen just at the same time that was completely separate from the Internet Trust. But I know that they're continuing to work in the group that Modi is working in to see their projects completed.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because of the, of our border, it's, it's theirs there in Kent.
If I may, Councillor Durkey brought up a, brought up a good point. When the original internet was installed, okay, 15, 20-plus years ago, it was state-of-the-art. And the way technology changes, when Pinkney's Point and Melbourne get their fiber optics and so on, that's new state-of-the-art. Some of the other areas, like I'll say Port Maitland, the town, Chibogue area and so on, ours is of the older style. Possibly it's going to be, there'll be some glitches in that. So I don't know what they'll do to improve, I'll say, our internet as compared to the new style of the internet that'll go there through fiber optics and so on. So you do bring up a good point, Patty, you know, that, yes, I see your frame will, will sometimes freeze, the same as John's will freeze, and I even noticed Trevor's will freeze sometimes and so on. And I think that's the older style, internet and so on, so. That, that's another avenue or another, another issue that'll have to be tackled in the near future. Was there anything further? Oh, go ahead, Patty.
Yes, I, my daughter is here working from home, and, you know, when you get your Wi-Fi windy days, it is, it is tough. And in the evenings, the more people who are on, the slower it is, so that it cuts out quite frequently. Yeah, it's, it's an issue.
Yeah, that's what the CAO was saying there, that she had an issue the other night at her house and so on. Anyway, was there anything further on the rural internet? Hearing none, we'll move down to item number seven, correspondence, 7.1, the prescribed public, I'll get it here, Prescribed Public Sector Bodies Accessibility Act. And I'm going to be upfront with you, I'm not, I don't know who to hand that off to, CAO or to Lauren?
Yep, I can take that, Mr. Warden. So one of the issues with respect to COVID-19 was around the Accessibility Act and the requirement for municipalities, as prescribed public sector bodies, to strike their accessibility committee and begin working on their plan and have their plan ready and submitted to government by April 1st, 2021. So obviously, we're not able to bring a committee together and to start doing the work. So the correspondence that's linked there is from the Justice Department, just indicating that they understand what COVID-19 has done to that timeline and that they will be providing extensions. How long those extensions will be, we don't know. So my team and I are going to move ahead. We have approved terms of reference for our accessibility committee. So we're going to move ahead and start advertising for our citizen reps. We can absolutely do that recruitment piece, and, and council can make selections without necessarily bringing people together. But we'll get that piece done so that when the restrictions are lifted through public health, that we can begin the work that will be required to develop our plan.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? Go ahead, Trevor.
I mean, we're meeting via Zoom, and I know it's not as good as certainly a
Face-to-face.
Yeah, a face-to-face meeting for the purposes of putting together, you know, accessibility policy and way forward for, for the municipality district of Yarmouth. But having said that, I mean, the committee could be struck, and they could do what they could do online for the time being, and again, documents can be shared. So any comment on that, maybe through, through the Warden to the CAO?
Go ahead, Victoria.
So quite right, Councillor Cunningham, that's exactly the strategy we'll use. You know, recruiting citizen reps is not something that happens quickly. And I think that we can position ourselves for success by getting that piece done now. So we're going to move ahead on that.
Thanks.
Can I ask the question of the CAO? How will you promote this out there to try and find a citizen rep? What are, I know there's Facebook, social media, et cetera, but.
So Saltwire is still not publishing in hard copy their periodicals, but the Clear Shopper and the Lobster Bay Shopper will begin publishing again this week. Their first issue goes out tomorrow. So we'll have a print media opportunity. We'll obviously use, as you said, our Facebook page and our website. We'll also work through some referrals. There are agencies who either have clients or who have experts who meet the terms of reference requirements for your citizen reps. And so we're going to use a variety of tools to reach out there and look for interested parties to help us with that work.
Okay. In, in that information, is, will there be, are these going to be daytime meetings, evening meetings, and the frequency of meetings?
Well, it's more than just meetings. It's quite a body of work there, you know. I think of the town of Wolfville and what they do. There's definitely meetings in terms of making recommendations to council and moving forward on the work. But there, there are engagements that have to happen, there are assessments that have to be done in the public realm. So it's quite a bit of work to get it done. What the District of Yarmouth has traditionally done, when, when they bring a committee together, is they, they try to accommodate the people on the committee in terms of getting, getting people together, together and getting the work done. And I wouldn't think that this would be any different.
Okay, okay, just wondering.
It's most important, these citizen reps, the act has very specific requirements. The citizen reps have to people who have a form of, of a barrier, or they have to represent an agency who advocates on behalf of people with, with barriers. So it's, it's a very specific skill set we're looking for, or perspective, or terms of reference, or experience that we're looking for. It's, it's not just anybody can be a citizen rep and working with you on this. It's going to take a little bit of time to get that recruitment done, and we don't want to eat up our extension with recruitment when we can be doing that now.
Okay, no, no, I was wondering that too, but, okay, that, that's fine. Was there any further questions of the CAO on the accessibility act? Hearing none, we'll move on. 7.2 in our agenda said for information. I'm not, I don't understand or didn't understand what that one was, it just, just said for information.
There's no correspondence for information, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay, item number eight. 8.1, budget discussions. This should be a short one. What are the wishes of council at this time? Do you have questions or concerns? Councillor Durkey, you have the floor.
I do. Thank you. Me, I do. Like I'm getting married or something. One of my concerns continues to be, as I have expressed, the, the idea that we are postponing decisions about the grants to nonprofit organizations until September. I feel that we, I know, you know, in the budget, we've allocated money for that. And I know we're, it's still uncertain how we're going to be affected with our taxes coming in in June. But we do have money in our operating reserves. And my concern is that all of these nonprofit organizations have no way of making any money. Fundraising is virtually impossible, because how do you ask someone for money under these circumstances? And organizations have lights, as I think both John and Lauren have referred to. They have lights to pay for, you have telephone bills, you have all kinds of different things to pay for. And as soon as we come out of COVID and people can start opening up, even in terms of some of our museums that, that can, can probably open with restrictions or some, the halls or whatever, that, that they're going to be really tight. So I, again, am concerned that we're leaving that grant agreement to September, because how are people supposed to operate over the summer?
Good point. Was there any other concerns at this time? Then we'll have, okay, I got Councillor Cunningham and then Councillor Cushing.
Right, I, I just wanted to mention that, I guess, through good fiscal management over the years, the Municipal District of Yarmouth does have a good balance in both the operating and the capital reserves. So there are many millions of dollars there, so that's, that's helpful to see us through. And also, there are a number of capital projects that we're contemplating, moving forward with. And part of that, of course, on the operating side, is to get, is to get engineering done for some important infrastructure pieces. We've got sidewalks that need to be done. And there's been some talk in the media lately about, you know, the value of those pieces in the infrastructure given COVID. I notice lots of people out walking on sidewalks. It's a good way to get your exercise and socially distance. And again, we've got, we've got a number of areas in District 5 that are very, very busy and have businesses, have high-density populations in terms of apartment buildings and those types of things that do need to be sidewalked. Also, South Ohio, you know, and again, it was a promise of a former council, but, you know, they're looking for, for some work to be done. So the crux of this is Milo Stretch Project, Wardwalk Project. We'll need to get these pieces engineered this year in order to move on any future. And we've got the money to, to, to spend into employee people and industry and private, in the private sector, which is important. But we'll need some of these projects engineered. So if and when, and likely they will, the provincial and federal governments come with some dollars to, to move forward, we'll have a project shovel-ready. And shovel-ready means it's engineered. So I think that should be a priority of our, of our budgeting activities. So those are my comments around budget at this point. And I know, I know it's difficult in, in terms of matching the revenues and the expenses, but I'm sure we'll have lots of conversations moving forward and provide a, a good, a good budget for Municipal District of Yarmouth for 2021. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councillor Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I agree with what Councillor Durkey had to say about the volunteer groups and the halls and whatnot. And we're in a, our community hall here in Pembroke is under the same, the same problems. But however, I, maybe I'm, maybe I misunderstood things, but I think I understood that if, if we're, if we get to go with it from the provincial government to open their doors and start doing things again, that if we, we could call a special meeting to look at these grants for these organizations, I believe, could we not? Instead of waiting until September? And to expand on what Trevor, Councillor Cunningham, Trevor Cunningham was talking about, I hear what he's saying about the shovel-ready projects, but I think we're still going to be a little cautious on, on which projects we, we look at to, to get engineered. Some of the projects that he mentioned are major projects, I mean, really major projects. So I, you know, we need to, we need to be ready so when this does lift and the federal government and provincial government have some monies available for us, where we can go. But the bigger the project, the more the cost for the engineers. So I think we should be a little bit more discussion on what, what project we actually want to get engineered, or as Trevor was saying, shovel-ready. Thank you.
Was there any further comment from anybody?
Yes, me, Mr. Chair, my hands are raised.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I originally sent out an email to everyone, I think it was actually Friday, on the 8th, in regards to volunteer fire departments that are unable to do any fundraising during this COVID-19 lockdown. And I've had a couple of discussions with different groups, and I'm getting concerned that we are getting ahead of our skis when we're talking about engineering budgets and stuff. We really got to look out for, for places like, and I'm going to just pick on volunteer fire departments, because obviously I'm, I'm part of one. A lot of them, yeah, they, they have the ability to charge their area rates and, and the Municipal District of Yarmouth also owes capital every year. But also a part of their budgets, they, they do a lot of fundraising for whether it be building renovations, vehicles, things like that. And I'm a little bit concerned that we're holding back on our grants to community organizations. And I think we should be looking at possibly doing that a little earlier than September. I'm concerned about on, on how long that this COVID-19 restrictions are going to be holding out. Like, we don't really have any indication from the powers that be, whether the provincial or federal government, on how long this is going to last. And I'm, I'm actually quite concerned that our volunteer fire departments are, are in dire straits and along with community halls. Lauren Cushing had mentioned, Councillor Lauren Cushing had mentioned a little while ago about the Pembroke Call, and he just mentioned it again today. I'm also concerned about the one in South Ohio in Gerard LeBlanc's district, the one out in Forest Glen. We, they recently had to cancel the canoe fund run, which is a big part of their budget. So I'm getting quite concerned. Councillor Trevor Cunningham mentioned about engineering projects and stuff. I do believe that we should have stuff that's, that's shovel-ready, but I would be very leery of spending any money on, on engineering until we know how the community organizations are going to be making notes. So it's something that we have to think about before we pass our budget, and I just want to make everyone aware. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councillor, oh, sorry, Councillor Durkey and then Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, a concern of mine is that our priority needs to be services to, to people at this point and making sure that these organizations are able to survive, because those are the ones who provide community services to people. And, and no disrespect, but I think to me, that's, at this point, it needs to be pri, higher priority than, than engineering, because we don't, we want these organizations to be able to continue. But I mean, I'm not disagreeing that we should, we have to consider some local projects. But, but right now, under the circumstances, I do not want to see nonprofit organizations fold because of lack of funding.
Councillor Cunningham?
Right, and, and not to confuse my comments, I mean, I too am very, very concerned about those issues. And, and, and those are really separate and apart from, largely separate and apart from our capital budget. We can't use capital money, gas tax money, to support those organizations that we're talking about. So really, they're, the issue's separable. So I wouldn't want to have the public think that it's an either-or, and the councilor think that it's an either-or. I think that we can support both of those priorities, and certainly those are all very, very important priorities. But at the end of the day, we still have to move the municipality forward. If, if we have $5 million in capital reserves and additional monies coming from gas tax every year, I would, I would like to think that our public would, would want us to, to spend some of those dollars to provide capital assets to them on a move-forward basis, and also be able to take advantage of any, you know, leveraging of provincial and federal dollars. So I just, through the engineering, I just don't want to get caught flat-footed not being able to deliver capital asset improvements, when in fact, they're, those issues are largely separable from, from operational issues. So, and again, we're, we're being stewards, so, so not to confuse people, it's not an either-or. It's not that we're doing, not supporting not-for-profits. That's a, that's almost an entirely separable issue.
Okay, just, if I could, Councillor Durkey, Councillor Cushing, did you have your hand up earlier?
Well, I, yes, I did, but I agree with what Trevor's saying. I was just saying we should be cautious of, of how big of an engineering project we, we should do. That's only my concern, you know, we've already committed monies to, to the ferry terminal and whatnot. So I'm a little, that's why I'm a little cautious. But I think Gerard had his hand up before I did later.
And before I go to Councillor, Victoria, yes, I thought your hand had been up. Go ahead, and then Councillor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I just want to let council know, you know, the concern over supporting our volunteers in the community who deliver services and programs, it has been heard at the staff level as well. And so the team who's working with the applicants for the community grants has been reaching out. And we've identified the groups that deliver a social service to our residents, and we've reached out to them to, in, to get a sense of, you know, how cash-strapped are they? What kind of risks are they facing? And those agencies that deliver a social service to your residents have not indicated that they need anything from us, you know, in the next six to eight weeks, sort of a thing. So the strategy we had discussed was around waiting to award the grants when we saw what our receivables were going to look like compared to last year in the hopes that you could actually be a little more generous. So in the draft budget that you were presented with, you know, there was, there was a fairly liberal allotment for community grants compared to what you've typically done. And that's in the hopes that the receivables will be better than anticipated, and you'll be able to, as Councillor Durkey said, really respond to the needs and the gaps that you, you see this year.
Councillor Durkey?
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Cunningham, for, for sharing your thoughts and putting things into perspective. You're correct in that there's two different budgets, and so we're talking two different things. So I appreciate the clarification on that. I guess, and again, to our, to I guess, and again, to our to our CAO, I do understand that that, you know, we've gone to the social communities, people providing social services. But I think, I mean, first of all, all events are canceled. So that that won't go through. But there are other organizations too that I think that we might want to have a discussion with.
For sure. Yep, agreed.
Okay, was there any further discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Allen. Oh, I mean, Counselor LeBlanc.
Actually, Counselor LeBlanc has been waiting a lot longer than I have. So I'll, I'll wait and let him do his first, please.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor LeBlanc.
Thank you. I was falling asleep. It just, I I agree with with all of them. I think, you know, we have two different budgets that where we can wait, I think we should and help help the public or help the organizations like community halls and fire halls and that as much as we can. Because like John said, they're not, they're not doing any fundraising. They can't, I know that the South Ohio Community Hall isn't their savings right now. You know, so and the saving, they don't have that much in savings. So it's it's not going to last too long. Thank you.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah, and I, I'm kind of in the same boat. I was, I was approached by one of the fire halls that recently did some renovations. And of course, their budget is mainly centered around their fundraising efforts, which which they don't have right now. And they're in the same situation that Counselor LeBlanc was talking about, that they're starting to dip into their savings. I'm glad to hear Madam CAO saying that we're reaching out to some of these groups because one of their concerns was they hadn't heard from the municipality or or any of the representatives yet, just to check in to see how they were doing. We have had a lot of our fire departments add on to their buildings, purchase equipment. And my concern is they are first responders. They're definitely groups that we don't need lacking. So I just, yeah, I just want to make sure that we are looking that way.
Okay, Trevor, then Patty.
Right, I, and I want to thank staff for reaching out to the community. And certainly, the fire departments are, and all the volunteers involved are tremendously valuable to the municipality and our communities. And and they're very, very highly thought of by the municipality, just the Yarmouth and our residents. And if there is any good news in all of us, it is that there may be a little ability to balance off some of the, some of the budget within, within our within our grants budget. Because again, it was mentioned earlier on that some of the events unfortunately aren't taking place, the tourist type events. And so we've given, I think fairly liberally to them in the past, which is a good thing. But this year, they won't be requiring the funds that they in the past simply because the events aren't taking place. So lots of those dollars will be able to be shuffled to some of our not for profits, fire halls, those types of things I'm expecting. So we'll have those conversations and and there's.
Counselor Dirk.
There's no, around it were previously allotted for other things to to support all those essential services, volunteers and community halls and fire, fire halls and all that sort of things that are critical in our community. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How long has it been since we have increased the operating budget for our fire departments? And maybe that's something that we want to consider at this point, just to ensure safety? I think it's been, it's quite a while since that has happened. If I could have some clarification on that, that would be great.
So operating dollars for fire departments come in various ways. So they levy an area rate, which we remit back to them as it comes into the municipality on a regular basis. We provide a small operating grant and that formula has not been reviewed in quite some time. Greg and I had a brief conversation about that not too long ago. And then their fundraising. So those are kind of the areas where they get their operating dollars. So the the grant that they get is a very small grant compared to the monies they raise through the area rate they levy. But you are quite right, Counselor Dirk, it's been a significant amount of time since that was reviewed. I think if I remember correctly, Greg, you told me that that model was in place when you assumed your role.
Yes, the operating, the operating component, grant component hasn't changed since I've been here. The only thing that's changed is the capital grant. It was up every year. But they have, they have also, you know, they also have the option to tweak their budgets and adjust their rates, which none of them have done this year yet. So.
No, so that's something that I think that, you know, I'm sure no one wants to put any type of rate up at this point. But if possible, maybe that's something that we could look at when the time is right to possibly review that operating grant. And even maybe a one shot increase for this year might be something that we'd want to consider. Thank you.
So we have increased our funding to fire departments in the draft budget because we are now assuming through the general rate, the cost of workers' compensation for the volunteers. So we are increasing our funding to fire departments in this draft budget that's presented to you. But I hear what you're saying, Counselor Dirk. There could be one time special circumstances. And, you know, when we come out of COVID and we're able to fully engage, there are going to be lots of things we're going to learn.
Counselor Cushing?
No, I was just giving thumbs up. I was agreeing with what Patty and Victoria were saying. Sorry about that.
Counselor Dirk.
No, I was doing a thumbs up too, sorry.
I try to take everything inside. If there's no other comments, I have one. It might be lengthy. The budget, the the draft budget that we went through and so on. I believe staff done an excellent job and so on. And it, because of COVID, everything changed. And when I say everything changed, everything changed for the general public, changed for for businesses. It changed in the agricultural industry. It changed in the fishing industry. Everything changed and we're trying to learn to cope with those changes. But a municipal unit, even though it is, it is the people who own the municipality. We have been chosen through an election to represent those people, to run the operation in a fair and economical way. I believe that the municipality of Yarmouth, council has always and is, as is council at this time, you have been dealt, I'm not going to use a card game, but you've been dealt a situation which is completely off the realm. It's not the norm. It's not, two fire departments have burnt, what do you do? This year has changed how everything is done financially. People are wondering how they can, tax rates, the whole nine yards. But I believe, and I feel very strongly, that our staff is doing an excellent job. But I also have been around long enough to know, and I have to agree with Counselor Trevor Cunningham, you can't put everything on the back burner because things are bad. If we don't look at doing some projects, whether it's a sidewalk, whether it's building a building, whether it's doing something, it takes so long for municipal units to be able to move forward on a project. It's not because staff don't do their work. It's because it's municipal government. And whereas I can go out and build a building, I go get a permit, I hire a contractor and I do it. The municipality has to do five times as much to build that same building. I think the municipality should still look at, and I'm not saying big projects, but still look at the possibility of some projects to move forward. When COVID is over, there will be money out there in whether it is federal or provincial money, gas tax money, or whatever it is, I think we'll be able to move forward. But Counselor Dirk did bring up a good point because I've been thinking about it quite strongly is there is a lot of organizations out there that bank on putting an application in for a thousand bucks to help do the roof on their building or to fix doorways or fixing electrical in their community hall. Because they can't fundraise, because they can't hold any functions, no weddings, no nothing in their facilities, those costs are going to be there. So if they're asking for $1,000 this year, they're going to ask for $2,000 next year because now it's going to cost more to do the roof. The roof could be repaired this summer because contractors are able to go and do it. I think, and I believe, that we as the council should be given the opportunity to look at all the grant requests that are looking for repairs, for minor repairs to their facility, to improve them, to keep them functioning when COVID is over. If when COVID is over and the roof is leaking, they're not going to have any function to fundraise, to fix the roof so they can have functions. I think we should be looking forward to trying to help in those organizations. There's a lot of the organizations, CFAS, the wine and seafood, the car show, et cetera, et cetera. They're not happening. So we don't even need to look at those right now. But I think we should be looking at in the very near future, those ones that are going to need repairs. Because a lot of those repairs can be done, whether it's windows or whatever. I'd like to see us keep moving forward as though we are still a very functioning municipal unit, trying to facilitate the things that people need because those are services. And the other point is, I'm going to look at Lauren's grade on. Lauren, how many young people in Pembroke Hall? Like, when I say young people, I'm saying 40 and younger are members of your hall.
I would say zero.
How many people that are young? Yeah.
Yeah.
How many people?
None.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, there's a lot of seniors that are volunteers in all of these organizations. And without doing anything for one year, enthusiasm dies. So if Lauren had 30 seniors, 55 and above, after COVID is over, if he has 20, he's going to be lucky. Because they want to get used to being at home and not doing, I think we should be looking. I support Counselor Dirk 100% that we should be doing, doing something now. And I also support Trevor that we should not be sitting back on our laurels because it does take time to get projects up and going. I'm not seeing going out and spending huge sums of money because, yes, we do have the ferry terminal, we do have the airport, we do have all those already. But I think we should still be, I'm going to use the word proactive. And Madam CAO, you might not like my theories, but I think that's what we have to be looking at. Let's not sit back and not do, let's stand up and do a little. That's my rant. Thank you for listening. Okay, was there any further discussion on the budget? Was there anything, Madam CAO, that you wanted clarity on? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Cushing, go ahead.
Yeah, and, you know, you brought up a good point there, Warden, about, you know, usually at our community hall on a Thursday night, we have anywhere from 50 to 60 people participating in either playing music or listening. And so they're all seniors. And once this COVID is lifted, I can pretty much guarantee you that that will reduce to about half because seniors will still be very nervous about going out in public. So and when you have half, we're going to have half the income or less. So, yeah, because we're trying to raise money now for a couple of new doors, right? So anyway, I agree with you and Patty. You brought it, you brought it to our attention very well and John did too. And, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good thing to think about.
So Madam CAO, what what is the, what were, what are we looking for today at this meeting pertaining to the budget?
So it's my understanding that the budget is ready unless there are objections to be recommended by committee to hold to council. So the operating budget for 2020, 2021 and the capital improvement plan.
Okay. Okay, so.
So I'm just looking for a motion from committee to hold to recommend them to council.
Okay, and that would be for our rates to stay the same?
Or is that? That's the direction I've been given, yes, yeah. So you have two draft documents that were circulated based on instructions from council. I'm not hearing that there's any amendments to those documents. Our timing in terms of making certain awards is up for discussion. But the the financial plan, both operating and capital, appears to be wholly intact. I'm not hearing any amendments to that. So I think a recommendation to council would be in order.
Counselor Cunningham? You have the floor, Trevor.
Yes, I'll make a motion that the committee to hold forward to council. The budget documents discussed and is circulated. There being no, no objection in that the rates remain the same moving forward into our next fiscal.
Are you seconding that, Counselor Cushing? Yeah, second, okay, moved by Counselor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Cushing for recommendation to move this to the May 28th, is it?
27.
27th meeting for approval. Is that the wishes of council? Thumbs up, thumbs up. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I didn't hear any comments, if I may, Madam Chair or Madam CAO for Greg. Everything is comfortable on the finance, I mean, in that respect, Greg?
I think we're still on the same path, pretty much as we have been all spring and summer. We're watching our cash flows and that's going to be what the thing, that's going to be the critical piece going forward into the summer. I think, as I said in our working session, that the budget is pretty robust and it gives us, I think, a lot of power to do some things. And it's, and it's flexible enough in what we've allowed for to try to do some of the things you mentioned. I've, I hear your points about being proactive and I like that. I think we should continue as if the sky's not going to fall. But importantly, though, cash flow will rule the day at the end. And we will watch that month by month as we go through the summer. So so far, so good.
Counselor Cunningham?
Mr. Warden, just a procedural item. I, I, I think that we should call for vote on the on the motion rather than the thumbs up, just just to make it formal. Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't, where it's a money matter, I request that.
Okay, I apologize, Counselor Cunningham. All, I guess I seen the thumbs up. Okay, all in favor, if I was saying aye? Contrary minded?
Nay.
Pardon me?
Nay from Deputy Warden Cunningham, please. I'm still unsure if this is the right path. I think we should, I'm going to stand by my comments I made earlier. I'm going to have to really scrutinize the budget a little bit more. So at this time, I'm not ready, but however, majority rules, so it will be forward.
Well, there'll be an opportunity on the May 27th meeting, Counselor or Deputy Warden, to bring some more of your concerns forward and address, address them.
I'm just trying to balance it a little bit more, or not not balance the budget a little bit. I, I'm just trying to balance it a little bit more, or not, not balance the budget a little bit more. I mean, balance, uh, our, um, our projects and stuff that we're moving on hence, and also with the, uh, community organizations and things like that. I, I gotta do a lot more thinking about that.
Okay. So I'll ask, uh, the Madam, uh, I'll ask the CAO, is it possible, uh, Victoria, that you and Greg and, and the deputy warden might be able to have a, a conversation to, I'll say, uh, feel some of his concerns to be able to, for him to be able to understand more, or is that something they?
Oh, absolutely. Yep. We, uh, we remain available to answer questions for clarification. Absolutely for sure.
Yeah. Okay. So there Deputy Warden, you know, if, if there's something that, uh, you wanted to have a Zoom meeting with the two of them to maybe, uh, dig in a little deeper onto some of the items and so on. And, uh, to answer some of your questions and so on. It's an opportunity. Okay, we'll move on. Eight point two, consumers in, consumer insurance rate. You had that in your package. It was a nice piece of reading, was brought forward by councillor Trevor Cunningham and so on. And I just wondering, uh, what is the, the wishes of, uh, the, or recommendations of the committee? Go ahead councillor.
Right. And this, um, this comes from, uh, the CB, April twenty-ninth, and, uh, the, the headline, it's, it's linked on our agenda, but the headlines, uh, drivers in Atlantic Canada could save forty-four million dollars total as insurers offer pandemic discounts. So I looked into this, talked to a number of people and in the story it says, well, you have to call your insurer and all this type of thing. But the insurance companies are, are varied. In their response, some you, you, you can't save much, some maybe five dollars, others maybe more. But in any event, get, given that, uh, the number of kilometers, uh, that people are driving has dropped drastically. Um, I would think, I, I've been keeping track, but obviously people are not traveling from town to town, town to city, community to community nearly as much. So I would expect that the risk that the automobile insurers are incurring is, has, has gone down substantially. Uh, having said that, um, you know, I, I, I think that, uh, provincially, federally and municipally governments have, have wanted a, um, a common approach to all of these things. So I, I, I'll move that we, uh, write the Department of Finance, uh, and the Superintendent of Insurance as part of, um, Department of Finance, asking for a, 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 a province-wide, some province-wide guidance to the automobile insurers uh, around, uh, refunds, uh, to, to auto insurance consumers. So I'll make that a motion.
Been moved by councillor Cunningham. Does he have a second or to that, uh, motion? You seconding that councillor LeBlanc? Okay, seconded by councillor LeBlanc. Was there further discussion on that motion? Go ahead, councillor Quicken, you wish to speak, go ahead.
Oh, no comments, no.
Okay. Uh, I, I will make one, one comment, uh, when I read that, uh, from information, Trevor, I'm going to say it was either in the second, I think the second paragraph intact had made an application to reduce the rate. And the rate was to, they were asking to reduce the rate from ten percent to, I think it was five percent, which was an increase which they were going to put on. They were going to, uh, the way I read it, they were putting a ten percent increase onto your insurance cost. And they were applying to reduce that by to five percent. Would I be right? That the way I read it, did anybody have it in front of them? I think it was on the second or second paragraph. I don't, go ahead Trevor.
Oh, that I won't comment on specifically, but I, but I will take the opportunity to, to say that I know in other jurisdictions, all insurers are, um, mailing rebate checks out to people. So I think, I think the onus is on the, the insurance industry. If they've, if they've, if they've got lower risks, which they will have at some point in the future to mail consumers rebate checks because, uh, clearly, clearly that's, it's, it's just not practical for everybody to call and, and ask about the, the rebate. And, uh, and again, I'm, I'm hearing lots of people are calling and there's, there's no rebate at all and that, that, uh, you know, I haven't spoken to everybody, obviously, there's lots of auto people buy auto insurance. But I think a, a, a better approach provincially would be to have, uh, the insurance industry look into this, see what the reduced, uh, risk is to them because our costs will obviously be lower and then issue a rebate checks globally. So, and, and again, that's part of the motion. So I, I, I think we should send that off and, and make them aware of our, our thoughts on, on the matter. Because, um, I, I think we're just looking out for our constituents by doing so.
Okay. Uh, Victoria, you had a comment?
Sure. So I think it'll be important that when the correspondence goes out, um, that we make reference to the responsibilities of the Superintendent of Insurance, um, to fulfill the duties. So you know, the, the superintendent is responsible to make sure the Insurance Act, the Insurance Act Regulations, the Automobile Insurance Reform Act, the Insurance Premium Tax Act, and the Motor Vehicles Act are all being honored, um, by the insurance companies. Because I think to councillor Cunningham's, Trevor Cunningham's point, um, there seems to be not just inconsistency in the marketplace, but the spectrum is so wide in terms of what consumers are experiencing. So I think it's important that our correspondence obviously raised the issue, um, you know, that, that we feel the industry has a responsibility to the consumer. But also ask, ask the superintendent to demonstrate through the legislation that compliances are being met.
Was there any further comments on, on the motion?
Question.
Question being called. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Eight point three. Excuse me? Eight point three, interest charges. What was?
So Mr. Chairman, um, we are in the middle of preparing a draft operating budget, which will affect the period that we're in now. Um, when council stayed interest for the months of March and April, we had calculated that the cost, the opportunity cost was about ten thousand dollars, uh, per period for the municipality. Um, I would suggest that the cost is the same for the month of May because we have not levied the new rates and therefore issued the new tax bills. So if council has an interest in staying interest charges for the month of May, um, two thousand twenty, then the cost of municipality would be roughly the same.
And say that, go ahead councillor Cunningham.
Yes, given that, um, residents are hurting in the time of COVID nineteen, I think it's more than appropriate to, um, to, uh, stay the interest charges, uh, for the month of May twenty twenty.
So that would be a recommendation to council, would it?
Uh, a motion, a motion to recommend to council, yeah.
Oh, second that.
Hey, it's been moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Quicken to stay the interest rates for the month of May. Uh, councillor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Um, I'm not, this isn't to just disagree, this is, uh, to, I just want some clarification on this. So basically, for those people who have not been able to pay, um, or have interest accruing from previous, uh, inability to, to pay, uh, their taxes, we, we are staying the interest charges for April or March, April, May. Just want to confirm that. Um, but also to discuss the fact that once the bills go out in June, then, then this is a different story, just to, that these two things are, are quite different. Because we are not, uh, saying we're not going to charge interest if people don't pay their taxes for the twenty twenty. Just can we, Clara have a discussion on that?
Sure councillor Durkey, so great points to raise. So if a, if a property holder had interest arrears as well as tax arrears, we're not forgiving those arrears. What you've done is you've said, um, that on the month of, uh, March thirty-first, you won't apply the interest which would have been calculated. On, um, April thirtieth, you didn't apply the interest which would have been calculated and it appears as though you're going to do the same thing at the end of May. So any individual or property owner or corporation who had arrears and was attracting interest as of, um, February twenty-ninth will continue to, um, have that interest sitting on that account. When council approves the budget in May, um, council will also give instructions in terms of, um, interest. So the bills will go out and the due date will be June thirtieth, um, and interest will, will start to attract in July. Um, we generally don't post the interest till the end of July. So, um, and the cost to the municipality, um, on a decision on interest will be significantly different at that stage than it is right now.
Answering your question councillor?
Yes, yes. So, um, because there could be some confusion then, we don't want people to think because the, the province has given, um, is allowing, uh, it's not quite a deferral, but, uh, the ability, uh, for six months, uh, with, and, and we're talking about a policy to, um, for that, that money, um, that taxes will be not charged interest if they don't pay. There still will be interest to, uh, accruing as in twenty twenty for that, um, for any taxes, uh, not paid. So then those people who have been in arrears, they won't qualify for the same program because it has to be totally COVID related. Um, and this is, and this is quite different than what's been happening with us, um, going interest-free for these three months.
So quite right councillor Durkey, any possible policy that council may entertain around a certain amount of, uh, relief in terms of interest in order to allow time to pay taxes is very different from the motion you have on the floor.
Yes, thank you. I just want make, to make people aware that these two things are going to be quite different. Thank you.
So I, I called that motion, did I not? Yeah.
I think we need a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering. I couldn't remember if I had or hadn't. Sorry, had to step out for a second. So you've all heard the motion, uh, me by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Quicken. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Eight point four, May twenty-fourth, council, council meeting start time. Uh, the CAO has asked if the start time of six PM would be agreeable by councillors. That fine by, by everybody. I see three thumbs up, four thumbs up, five thumbs up, six thumbs up. And, uh, John, you're all right with the six o'clock start, or is that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay. So on May twenty-fourth, six PM. Victoria, okay?
May twenty-seventh, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, me. Okay, I'm sorry. I, I thought that's what it, uh, I had said earlier, but I had it down here as May, May twenty-fourth. I apologize. Second mistake of the year. Woo. Eight point five, you have that in your package, the draft council orientation policy. C dash zero thirty-eight dash twenty. You had that in your, uh, package councillors, uh, what is your wishes? You had the opportunity to read it and to go over it. Was there anything that you have concerns on or anything? Go ahead councillor Cunningham.
No concerns. I'll just, uh, move that we move it to, um, an extra regularly scheduled council meeting for approval.
Okay. Moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Durkey. Was there any discussion on the orientation policy? Hearing none? All in favor? Oh, do you have a comment councillor Durkey? Go ahead.
Uh, just a quick comment that I'm happy to see that. I think it's really important and I appreciate the work that's gone through to put this together.
Yeah. Good one. Ca, uh, CAO.
So, um, Mr. Warden, if it pleases council, I think we're just going to amend the title slightly to read council orientation and training policy because it does speak to slightly different functions. So, um, when it goes forward on May twenty-seventh, you'll just see a slight change in the title.
Okay. Okay. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded? Motion carried. Uh, can I ask a question of the CAO and of the secretary, the executive secretary? I had, uh, item, uh, eight point seven, the COVID nineteen property tax financing policy. And what is the policy number of that?
C dash zero, oh, they've got the same number. Yep. There's a numbering issue. You're right, Mr. Warden. We'll make sure we get that fixed.
Okay, I, I, I just, I, I wasn't sure and I didn't want to make, okay, so we're going back to eight point six, which is the draft technology policy, uh, T O forty-eight dash twenty. You had that in your package councillors. What is your wishes or discussions, comments and so on? Councillor Allen, go ahead.
Um, for starters, it's T dash zero eight four, not O forty-eight. I'm just correcting you, Mr., Mr. Warden.
What did I say? O forty-eight?
Yeah. Um, my concern, my concern with this is the cell phone aspect of it. Um, definitely we are in need of new, um, our technology should be kept up to date. Um, regardless who, who's on council, you, the way technology goes, things should be kept up to date. We're experiencing it now with some of us with the technology we have as far as, um, our Zoom meetings and things. But it's the cell phone aspect of it that bothers me. Um, I have my own cell phone. I, I know if I had to carry a second one and that around right now, just for council business, it would be a pain. And I'm just wondering, I just have some concerns around that, I guess.
So I could speak to that if you wish, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
Yep. So, um, I, I agree with you councillor Allen. Um, I will be in the same boat you will be. I'm using one device, um, for municipal and personal business. So I'll be in the same boat you'll be. Um, one of the, um, goals of the regular review of, of policy for the municipality of Yarmouth is to make sure that, um, we're adopting best practices and that we're doing things, um, within the spirit of, of municipal governance that positions the municipality, um, to mitigate risk. So cell phones are no longer just devices used to make, um, telephone calls. They are mini computers. They store information. They track electronic footprints. Um, and if, for example, you are using a personal cell phone, um, for municipal and personal business and a freedom of information request is worded in such a way, um, that the FOIPAP administrator needs to go into your phone to look for information. There's nothing ensuring that the municipality can afford the protection of your privacy. So we, so our administrator, let's say, would have to go into your phone and would have to look at whatever needs to be looked at to answer that FOIPAP application. And while there would be opportunity to redact things before, um, documents are released, the municipality's FOIPAP administrator is the one who reviews all of that material and makes the recommendations on redaction. And so there, there is not a way to afford your, your privacy to be protected if you're using the same device for both your personal and your municipal. So in the provincial government, for example, um, they, they, their cellular devices are issued by the government for the civil service um, and for the MLAs, and they use only that device for their government business. Um, municipalities like Queens, East Hans, HRM, um, are also moving in this. Municipalities like Queens, East Hans, HRM are also moving in this direction. And it's it's largely to do to do with, you know, protecting the municipality's information with respect to any device that can store information and ensuring that it's administered and it's managed by the municipality. If you're using your municipal, your personal cellphone for municipal business, Mike has no authority, I have no authority over that device to ensure that it's being managed correctly to ensure anything to do with firewalls. We might format the phone the way it needs to be formatted for municipal business, but we can't enforce that if it's your phone. So there's a host of issues in in that general theme which predicate the proposition that's before you to, you know, include cell phones in council's technology provisions.
Think she's froze.
No, I'm all I'm all done. I think the Deputy Warden has his hand up, Leland.
He does. I seen her. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I, as you all know, I sent an email in regards to this policy. I had a had a few issues with it and I had spoke, not necessarily at length with the with the CAO, but I did speak to her about it. And there's a, the cellphone piece was one of my big issues because with my type of work where, as you all know, I'm going back to work tomorrow, it'd be almost impossible for me to carry two cellphones. I also brought up the point of having one cellphone with two SIM cards. Maybe the CAO can speak to that after I'm done, but but that was something that I brought up that may be a quote unquote work around. Two SIM, two SIM cards would mean that's two phone numbers. For forever and a day, since I've had a cellphone or since I've been in municipal politics, I've used the same phone number. I don't want to have to change that phone number. I know there's a, that you could probably import your personal number into a government organization, but that's provided that I get elected this fall. That was one of my big concerns, but there's also another concern that I had, or two concerns. One of them is the type of technology that the municipality district Yarmouth issues. As you all, the municipality goes at great lengths to try to save the taxpayers money. Sometimes we don't get the best equipment, hence my laptop. I have no camera on it to do Zoom meetings. I think we should have something in there that's written about that we have, I don't know if you'd call it acceptable technology, but something that's workable. As we all know, as the technology nowadays is just increasing exponentially. In regards to smartphones, I know the Warden has one, I don't think it's it's one of the better quality ones. Like when you compare like, say, an iPhone 6 to the new iPhone 10s or Galaxy, your Galaxy's to the Galaxy S9, S10 that are out now, they're leaps and mubs. And what I'm afraid we're talking about a municipally issued smartphones, we don't have the best best equipment to work with because with the newer equipment, if you want to download attachments or have two or three different screens open, like right now, I'm doing this Zoom meeting. I can text. If someone messages me or I can look up a document on the municipal website, we're no trouble at all. Three or four years ago, when I was using a BlackBerry that had the Android operating system, I couldn't do that. So we should really be mindful of the types of technology we get. And the second thing I wanted to bring up is that, since your council shall be issued the following equipment tablet. I actually have a problem with tablets. I find a lot of the tablets are too small. I I like laptops. For me, they they work better. I do know that there are different sized tablets. But for me, I just have a feeling that I break mine. I'd like to see that either tablet and or laptop at the council's choice of the municipalities. Those are the two points that I I have issues with. However, also speaking with Victoria, I was a little leery on the FOIPOP thing and I do understand her concerns with the, it's your personal data on one device. And if a FOIPOP requests it, but I do, I did push back quite hard on that. But I'm coming to the realization that this is the age we live in and I very well may have to have two cellphones. But I just threw out, which I originally said, a smartphone uses two SIM cards. Thank you.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Counselor LeBlanc, did you have your hand up? No, okay. Counselor Cunningham and then Counselor Durkey.
Yeah, I I I hear hear everybody about it being inconvenient and the cost, and it is both those things. But having said that, the way the the way the policy is written is is correct. Unfortunately, we could get ourselves into a situation. It's not our legislation. It's provincial FOIPOP Act. Legislation is there for a reason. And again, residents have the right to, under the FOIPOP Act, to access information that we may transmit on on devices. So if we don't move forward with having cellphones or more than cellphones, the the devices is outlined in the policy, what could happen is there could be a FOIPOP request and one of us, I hope not, I could just say, listen, it's on my personal device. You're not getting it. And then there's a council, well, how could you let this happen? Like, how could you let people use their personal devices and now I can't get access to information I'm really should be able to get access to under the FOIPOP Act? So that's really messy. I don't think it will happen, but it may. And and again, we've seen all kinds of instances and all across the globe. And of course, they have similar legislation, you know, in different jurisdictions in the U.S. You know, everybody knows about the presidential battle with Hillary Clinton's emails and she was using a different server and all that type of thing. So this is all kind of in that in that spirit. The legislation sort of says, if you're going to be doing business, you do business on on a, in this case, a municipally issued piece of technology. And again, everybody understands that that's that's municipal business generally. And I mean, there there are, our people may use it for a personal caller, but you shouldn't, you shouldn't. And not only that, we'll have a dedicated phone number that we can publish and people can get hold of us on that. And I don't think there's any expectation that you pick it up, you know, every five minutes. But, you know, you you may have some expectation that, you know, within half a day or whatever that you do. And it may be that, you know, for meetings and that type of thing, we could, we could certainly text a a number of cellphone numbers. But on those pieces of information that are are critical to municipal business, emails containing documents, all those types of things, comments. I think we're going to have to go this way basically because the FOIPOP legislation says we need to go this way. So it's kind of out of our hands and the policy is written. I'll I'll make a motion based on that that we forward the policy as is written. I guess we've already made that motion. My apologies. Those are my comments. Sorry.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you. I totally understand where Daniel's coming from. It is cumbersome, would be cumbersome to have to carry two cellphones, particularly if you're out on a boat and doing work. It's not easy. But but under the circumstances, I think it's the right thing to do. That way, if there is anything concerns and or any discussions about municipal business, it it could be done. And having a dedicated phone number for constituents to reach you on the municipal side of things would be very beneficial. However, the only disagreement I would have with the policy is I I agree that there should be a choice whether or not it's a laptop or or a a pad. I think it's easier as well to use a laptop, particularly for these Zoom meetings when you get more people on 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 the screen, it it's better. So I thank you for moving forward with with this policy. I do think it's important for our safety and for everyone involved.
Counselor, Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Yeah, in regards to what Counselor Durkey just said, I think there should be the option of whether it's top tablet and or a municipally issued laptop. And also, most generally, when the municipality goes out and buys technology, they buy, like, say, if you needed, for example, five iPhones. Well, out where I live, at the current conditions of selling an internet service, the only phone that really works well in this way would a Galaxy or an Android device. So I think there should be provision in there that, say, for extenuating circumstances, like, say, someone like me who needs a, something a little bit more reliable until the internet and stuff services improved. I think that should be something that's that's put in there. My wife and son both use iPhones. They don't work nowhere near as well in regards to cell service over here as a Galaxy does, and that's that's a fact. So I think there could be some flutes in there in that regard, but that's my opinion.
Okay, CAO, go ahead.
If it's agreeable with the mover and the seconder, I I would concede that it will be useful in the policy to have language that would allow IT to accommodate any technological and or accessibility issues an elected official may have when selecting the technology tools for that elected official.
Agreed.
Is that all right with the seconder? The seconder agree with that?
Was that me? Yes.
Who was this? Who was? Yep, okay. Yep, and and I would also agree that the language could read tablet or laptop.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question to the CAO.
Mm hmm.
Victoria? Okay, this, once this policy is in in place and we say after the next municipal election, whoever is counselor and so on, if the council, after one years of, I'll say, usage of this policy and of the 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 prescribed way that it's written, if the council is not, I want to use the word happy with the terminology and the way it's working, can council then approach and change that policy to make it more adaptability to the usage that they're finding it would be better to? I guess I'm asking, Victoria, can they change the policy very easily if it's not what the council likes? It's a new car right now. It's it's new. We're happy with it. But after years driving, we find that the steering wheel is not convenient. Can we change it?
So it's a great question. So all of your bylaws and policies should be living documents. And as you use them like a tool in your toolbox, if it if it's not meeting the contemporary circumstances, the current circumstances, then we have to be willing to open those documents up and make sure we're speaking to whatever's going on at the time or whatever tools you need at the time. So because this is a policy, not a bylaw, it can happen very quickly if council chooses to amend it to suit its needs. So seven days' notice is what you need to bring a policy forward to council. And if, as the Warden says, you know, this new tool is being exercised and and we're finding that what we need in reality isn't being accommodated in the policy, then then we need, we absolutely need to address that.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham. You're muted. You're muted, Trevor.
Yeah, my apologies. My apologies again. I I made the motion. It was second and we did a little amendment, but a thought just popped into my mind and I'm wondering if we couldn't also have a friendly amendment. I'm obviously in favor of this. But I I I've seen cases where, and we're near the end of our term, where folks have technology and they've gotten used to it and this type of thing. And rather than giving it back, they've kind of said, well, can I buy it from you? You know, including the, because I've got all this stuff on my phone and I've taken some pictures or whatever might be the case. I I would recommend that when the policy comes back to council at at our regularly scheduled meeting, at regularly scheduled meeting for approval, that we add in some language around prohibiting that. So when when somebody's term ends or when they're not reelected, all the technologies return totally to the municipal district Yarmouth. It's not available for purchase and that type of thing because that 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 obviously causes issues even around FOIPOP. So, you know, if somebody were to 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 want something and somebody buys a technology and any event, it it can become an issue. So I think that should be made clear in the policy. So I'll offer that as a friendly amendment for discussion.
So Counselor Cunningham, if I could ask a question for clarification before the debate, there is language in the policy that that says an elected official can purchase the technology at the depreciated value, but that it has to be wiped clean by the municipality's IT department. Does that speak to your concerns or are you still looking for a friendly amendment?
It 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 does because it's just a sticky wicket. What's the depreciated value? And and generally, when we dispose of assets, we have, we have that available to everybody, right? If we dispose of an asset, it's not, so so you could get into almost a conflict of interest. I think it's a small issue, but because it's a small issue, I don't don't think you want to deal with it at all as a as a staff and a council.
Deputy Warden?
We still have a good potential. Yeah.
I I'd have to agree with Counselor Cunningham on that. And I I want to go back because my internet cut out here. I was talking about internet. Did the CAO speak to a two phone that takes two SIM cards? I know they're available through at least the Android operating system.
I didn't, and I can do that now, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So the issue with having technology that will allow either two SIM cards or a split SIM card doesn't create the ultimate differentiation between work that might be involving your municipal life and work that might be involving your personal life. So on those devices, if I can just explain it, you can have one device and you can have almost two identities on that one device. And you would toggle using a password back and forth between those two profiles. The issue is, is that, and again, because of electronic footprints and FOIPOP legislation, if there's an inquiry and that device has to get picked up, the toggling back and forth is really not the barrier you're looking for. And then, of course, furthermore, if if counselors, because they have a high level of trust around a segregated municipal tool, if we're using one phone and two SIM cards and you've got work on the device that maybe relates to in-camera items and you set it down and and, you know, somebody in your family has access and and they pick it up, they may inadvertently see things you didn't intend to share because you had forgotten to toggle back to your personal profile. So while I while I think that that technology can be useful in some instances, it doesn't actually achieve the spirit of this policy.
But ill regardless, ma'am CAO, if if you had cellphones and there's a FOIPOP request, could it not the 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 people that are looking into that, except for example, I I know that sometimes we forward messages all the time to to different accounts, whether it was because of option one, example, sometime I get sent files that my municipal computer will not open up from different government organizations. And I don't have access to go in my municipally issued computer and change the program for good reason, by the way, but I need to read some information. Sometimes I have to forward it to a personal account on my computer or phone that has the the app or the the programming to open it. So in that regard, I guess typically, if you get FOIPOP, they can even look at your personal stuff.
But my answer to that question brings us right around to another piece that this policy will achieve. And that's that the municipality of Yarmouth invests heavily in IT department, in IT software and in IT hardware. And if a municipal official cannot conduct municipal business, And if a municipal official cannot conduct municipal business using the tools that are provided, workarounds are not the solution. The solution is to have our IT team fix those problems so that you have that safety and you have that reliance on your municipal tools.
And that turns right around to the type of tools that need to be issued. They're not up to date.
They will be.
Like this computer that I have here, I'm willing to bet that it's at least six years old.
Yeah. Yeah. And this policy basically holds us all accountable to make sure that your tools are the tools you need and that they operate the way they were intended to operate. So if that means, for whatever reason, you know, in the middle of a term, something becomes obsolete, then we have a responsibility collectively to make sure we provide you with the tool that's no longer obsolete.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I know a lot of work went into this and there's a lot of concerns and stuff, but stuff is changing. I was sort of hesitant to move forward with this because I have concerns and I still have concerns, but like it or not, it the municipally-elected official, it has to be done. So I'm going to vote in favor of moving this policy forward with the minor changes were put forth and I'll have to live with it. Thank you.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on that motion? Go ahead, councillor Cunningham, then councillor Cushing. Excuse me, just before you guys start, John, can you take the meeting for a few seconds? Deputy Warden?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chair. I do believe I heard, who was it? Trevor, then who?
Trevor and then Lauren, then councillor Cushing.
Okay, councillor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Yeah, just technically, the amendment I suggested with regard to not being able to buy the technology back before it comes before council, just wondering if the secondor's all right with that as well. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so that was amended. I guess my question to the staff is, is those amendments going to be on the policy when it comes to regular council on the 27th?
Yes, it is.
Okay, councillor Cushing, I believe you had, was the next one?
Yes, 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 it is, Deputy Warden. I totally agree with some of your early comments. If I get elected next fall, I'm not very happy about two phones with me, but, you know, it is what it is. And I believe that security and as our CAO lined out is very important. And as for the technology, I'm just assuming the next council will have the latest and best technology on their laptop or their tablet that will address any concerns of any problematic concerns that we may have at the present time. So that's what I think that, I think that's what we'll certainly be looking at. So, thank you.
Councillor Durkey?
Thank you, Deputy Warden Cunningham. This is a question for our CAO. Will this be implemented as soon as the policy has been approved? Or will this, will we be waiting until the next election before this will come to fruition?
So what staff was hoping was that this would be approved and it would apply immediately following the 2020 election.
Okay. Thank you.
And councillor Durkey, the only reason for the lag will be we're just going to require some time to do the procurement piece. And so we wouldn't be prepared to go live with it immediately.
Understood. Thanks.
All right, is there any more questions? Okay, hearing none, I guess a motion's on the floor to move forward with this technology package with the recommended amendments. Call for the question?
Question.
They say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Warden, do you want to take over the meeting or do you want to move forward?
No, I'll take it again, councillor. Deputy Warden? So 8.7. COVID-19 property tax financing policy. And I don't know what the number is or the policy number. Do you have a?
There's attachments to that.
Pardon me?
There's no attachments to that.
No.
That's correct. So the attachments weren't made because the policy work is not even in a final draft form that is ready to be made available. And so it's my understanding that council wanted this on the committee of the whole agenda so that we could begin talking about the announcement by the premier that the province had approved a lending through the municipal finance corp of $380 million to municipalities and some provisions for relief of taxes and interest for a period of time to qualified applicants. And so I had worked with our team and we actually had a fairly lengthy conversation with legal last week. And I was in the hopes that legal's comments would be received in time to format them and present them to council. The comments are lengthy and they're fairly technical. So what I'd like to do, aside from anything that council might wish to discuss on the topic, is take those legal comments back and provide a briefing note to council around that for your future considerations.
Councillor Durkey?
Thank you. Yes, I think it's very important that we get feedback from legal on this policy in meetings with NSFM. It was highly recommended that we get individual municipalities get their own legal comments on that. So I would, my recommendation would be to wait until we hear back before moving forward with discussions on this policy.
Councillor Trevor Cunningham, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll throw you maybe to Ms. Brooks. Maybe she could talk a little bit about the context for the need of a legal opinion, either now or we could wait until such time as the briefing's given. It's perhaps an option to do it then rather than now and have that whole conversation. But there are considerable legal concerns around adoption of a policy at municipal level.
That's right, yep. So, you know, in speaking with the solicitor, there were several areas of law that this policy touched on where there were some concerns. And so it's important to present those concerns to council in a way that you can understand them and decide how or if you want to move forward on amendments or on a policy full stop. So I think for the benefit of the record, you know, the contemplation is, is that there wouldn't be any forgiveness of taxes. There would be considerations and accommodations with respect to interest and that there would be qualifiers for any applicants that, you know, would set about parameters for who would qualify and who wouldn't. So it's fairly involved, it's fairly complex. So if it's agreeable to council, what we'll do is we'll provide you with the documentation that will take us through step by step where the areas of concern came from our legal advisor.
Thank you.
Any further comment, concerns? So, Madam CAO, so we don't need no motion or anything, or you want a motion on nothing on this policy at this time?
No. What I'll do is I'll have it prepared for committee of the whole in June for your consideration.
Yeah. Okay. It, my one comment from being on the NSFM conference calls Wednesday nights. It's funny, I guess, how would I put, how would I say it? You're all sitting around the same campfire. You're all singing kumbaya, but they're not, they're not all singing in the same tone, I guess. I find that municipal units, yeah, they kind of like the 380, but they don't know how they want to use it and so on. And I kind of thought NSFM was really working hard into councillor Durkey to try and make something that was very uniform across the province so that was a comfortable feeling, eh? But it'll be interesting, see how it all works out and so on. But kudos to NSFM for working as diligently as they have and the AMA to try and get us all together on the same campfire. Okay, 8.8, summer schedule. Through the summer months, we usually, I guess, I think, is it August, September? Was it August that we don't have meetings? Can somebody refresh me, CAO?
It was August last year when we didn't have committee of the whole, we just had council.
Okay. So what is the wishes of council at this time? The, go ahead councillor Cushing.
I believe it's very important that we continue having council meetings because of the situation we're in right now and if we have to make some sudden changes or something important comes up that we, I think we should have a regular scheduled meetings.
So you're saying you want both committee of the whole and council or in the month of August to have council meeting only?
I think we should have both myself, that's my personal opinion.
Okay. Comments from other councillors? Councillor Cunningham, go ahead.
For the reasons councillor Cushing's outlined, I agree. And these are trying and difficult times for everybody. And I think, I think we need to be there, especially this summer, for our full slate of regularly scheduled meetings. And I understand the vacation piece, probably lots of people aren't going to be going a long way away anyway. So that, that kind of, I guess, keeps people closer to home and easier to have the meetings. So for this year, I'd agree, I'd agree 100% with council. I think we should maintain our regularly scheduled slate of meetings.
Okay. Just councillor, go ahead councillor Durkey.
Do, could we, should we make a motion on that? Do we need that, just to say, or can we just have everybody agree or disagree? I mean, I agree under these circumstances and I, you know, in light of the situation, I don't think people are going to be going very far, although maybe that will change. But, but I agree that we should continue with our regular meetings.
Okay. I think we could use a motion to recommend it to council for the 27th?
I can do that.
Okay.
Oh. CAO?
Yeah, all I was, all I was going to share was, you know, your council policy actually provides for your regular meetings. It would be if you weren't going to have the regular meetings, a motion would actually be helpful.
Okay. Okay, councillor Warden, go ahead.
No, I had nothing.
No, okay, no, just that your sign lit up, so I thought you wanted to say something. So we will carry on through the June, July, August, September with both our committee of the whole and our regular council meeting. The only difference that we may, okay, that are, yeah, that we may find, we may want to change the start times of those, Madam CAO? Need be?
Sure, yeah. If council, for whatever reason, needs timing to be adjusted, then we'll absolutely have a conversation.
Yeah, okay. And councils agree with that. Some morning, we may start our committee of the whole at 9:30 and so on, there's no issues. But I mean, that can be done, right? Okay.
We are still endeavoring to accommodate the councillors who do have jobs outside of council, so we'll still want to be mindful of that.
Yes, okay. So we're good with that one?
Uh, here.
Who is that?
Deputy Warden.
Oh, okay, Deputy, go ahead, John.
As you all know, I'm starting full-time work tomorrow due to my illness I had over the winter. I would appreciate if the meetings are going to go on, that we could be a little bit flexible on the possible times. I also now need to know, we're before, since last September the 10th, I've been on a not really any schedule, but now that's changed. So I need to know, if possible, three days in advance so I can make arrangements to attend the meetings if they're during the day.
Okay. Okay. So then, in saying that councillor, if we had a 10 o'clock meeting, like a regular committee of the whole 10 o'clock meeting, you would do that either from home or could you do that from Tuscan itself? Where, what's?
I could do that from Tuscan. Actually, the technology piece makes it a little bit easier in that respect because I don't have to run home or anything like that or go to the municipal office. I can, it saves me a little bit of time. So in the way that we're doing things currently, it's actually to a benefit to me.
Okay. Okay. We'll keep that in mind.
And as always, I'll be available throughout the day via cellphone and stuff like that. But as far as pop-up Zoom meetings and stuff like that, it'd be a little bit harder for me to attend. That may be my work attire and full of grease rather than clean shaven and long hair.
And on that note, gee, you know, we may even be able to put a Wi-Fi tire on Daniel's boat so that he can make the meeting. Okay, 8.9. 8.9 is the appointment recommendations to council. 8.9.1, the auditors, Grant Thornton, I guess I need a motion to recommend to council? But it's the wishes of council. Councillor Durkey?
I'd like to know, when was the last time that we have done RFPs or on these three positions?
So I can answer that, Mr. Warden. We are in the last year of contractual obligations for both auditor services and the municipal solicitor. David Ollie was, I think, just appointed the municipal crier in 2018, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Okay, so the end of the contract, I would like to suggest that we do a little review and ensure that we're getting the best value for our money.
Okay.
We'll have, yeah, we'll have to do an RFP process for sure, yep. And I would agree with councillor Durkey. We'll have to look at, you know, how we procured in the last round and make sure that this round, you know, the deliverables meet our needs today.
Okay. Councillor Allen and councillor Cunningham, I think.
If we're under contractual obligations, why do we have to go through the appointment every year?
Because the MGA says you do.
So if we decided not to appoint one?
Yeah.
Anyway, all right, it's, I guess, it's probably a dumb question. I just, yeah, if we go under contract obligations, then I suppose, anyway, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
So if I could speak to that, Mr. Warden, just before you move on. So councillor Allen, you're quite right, there's a disconnect between, and again, this is all around the environment in which municipal government operates versus what our legislation indicates we operate under. So the legislation says you have to annually appoint those offices. But when you procure those services now, you are, it would be very difficult to go in the marketplace and procure that year over year as opposed to getting five-year contracts. And so, you know, the AMA and the NSFM have standing committees on MGA review. And I know at the AMA table for sure, and quite likely at the NSFM table, that will be a high priority post-COVID to open up that document and modernize it. And that's a piece that needs to be addressed, you know? It doesn't make sense to procure and sign contracts for five years but have to annually make the appointment.
Councillor Cunningham?
I'll move that we recommend to next regularly scheduled council meeting that our auditors be Grant Thornton for the next year.
Seconder for that. Seconded by councillor Cushing. And one comment and have to refer to Greg. Greg, yeah, here, it had been three years ago, three or four years ago, we sat down with the Grant Thornton and had a discussion with them, did we not?
That's correct, probably both three years ago, before we entered into this most recent three-year contract term. And that's when we we talked about the terms and the contract. And and then they, we we went with, they made a proposal to the council that as opposed to us going to the RFP.
Yeah.
Council accepted.
Yes.
I think this is, this is the third and final audit year.
Yes, that's what I thought. So I I guess to councillor Durkey's question and so on, to do municipal governments audit, there's not a lot of companies out there that are up to speed on to this, is that, is that, is that not right?
So that you have to be a qualified audit firm to do municipal audits, you have to have certain certifications?
Yes. And there is only, there is only, if I remember rightly, at the time, there is only a couple out there that that are qualified and so on. So I guess my question was going to be, is this something between Victoria and Greg? You guys can have the discussion, is this something that should be starting to look at now to meet with them to see what their proposal might be? Or or do we want to go to an RFP and take that chance? How, you guys will have to, I don't want to be, how to put it, I know an RFP is probably the proper way. But also, when Grant Thornton came with the proposal, it was a good proposal. And they've held to their, to their word on their proposal. So I I'm just wondering if that isn't the route that we shouldn't go again, see what they'll come up with and then do an RFP. And I think you'll find that they'll fall well within that or?
Well, you know, we we had, well, we have procurement policy and procurement bylaw and procurement legislation that we have to honor. And and there is language in those documents that would speak to certain types of customizations or certain skill sets. But there's, there's always a procurement process, you know, it's on my, on my radar for a September kind of a situation to start to look at that.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so you, we've been moved and set, oh, Trevor, go ahead.
I'd just like to make the further comment that, you know, I'm I'm happy that we've been able to source these services locally with competent professionals. And that's good news, given that, given that, you know, we do have legislation and policy around the RFP process that we're required to to do to source these over multiple years. And so really happy that we've had a good relationship with Grant Thornton over the last number of years. And they've been able to provide locally sourced competent advice. Thank you.
Okay, are you ready for the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. 8.9.2 Solicitor Raymond Jackard, what is the wishes? I need a motion. Trevor? Go ahead.
Yes, I'll move that we appoint Raymond Jackard, our solicitor, for for the next year. And again, those comments about the locally sourced competent service apply here as well. So pleased to be able to have a local provider provide those services. Thanks so much.
Who seconded, oh, seconded by a quick, more question, councillor Cushing, excuse me. Was there any further discussion? Patty, go ahead.
Thank you. I I have some concerns with some of the issues that we've been dealing with where we've had to go outside to get that service from legal from outside of the community. And so we're paying for, to retain Raymond, but we're also using outside sources. So I'm wondering if there is a a better way to to just have one legal person that's that we, that we deal with on all these matters, whether it's possible or not. And and my, and so when is, when is Raymond's contract finished?
We're in the last year of the contract.
Okay, so it wouldn't be till next year that we would be looking for RF, or putting out an RFP for either any of them, correct?
Well, we would be doing that process during this year because become, as of April 1, we would be outside of a contract.
As of April 1, 2020?
2021, 2021.
So if we agree to this now, then then it would go until 20 next year? And and but you would be, we would be putting it out on RFP, just I want to clarify that. So if I approve this now, that goes for the next year. But you can still, like I said, I'm concerned about the financial component of paying two different legal services.
So without getting into an in-camera area with respect to contract enforcement, I will suggest that it's not uncommon for municipal government to have to source certain expertise from more than one vendor based on availability, based on certain skill sets. We are not double dipping, so the contract that we have provides for services in a very prescribed way. And we are not double dipping to get those services provided by an alternate vendor when Mr. Jackard is unable to help us out. The retainer you have doesn't include specific files. It it provides for attendance at council and committee of the whole essentially, and everything else we pay for separately.
Thank you for that clarification.
So it's been, yeah, we had a mover and a seconder for Raymond Jackard to be the solicitor for 2021. Was there any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary minded. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, 8.11, 8.10 has been taken off the agenda. I should have mentioned that at the start of the meeting, I apologize.
Mr. Warden?
Yeah.
We missed 8.9.3.
Oh, yes, I apologize, thank you. I done that on purpose just to see if you were keeping track of me, that's all, really. No, I missed it. 8.3, 8, 8.9.3 Municipal Crier David Oly needs to be appointed and so on. What is the wishes to council? Councillor Durkey, then councillor Cunningham.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Oly as our town crier for the next year.
Councillor Cunningham?
I'll second that and add that this guy does a fantastic job at all the events I've been at. Really, really, really good, so glad to be able to second the motion, certainly.
I, just for a comment, I seen David the other day. Oh, I can't remember exactly where, coming out of the grocery store or something, anyway, in the parking lot. And I asked him, I said, I said, you're not going to be too busy this summer, are you? And he said, no, he said, but it's given me time. He said, I've started making a new uniform, a new coat and so on. So now he's, no, I I believe having a town crier is a good thing. I'm trying to think the original town crier that we had, his name gone from me, done an excellent job and so on. And David does a good job. So was there any further discussion on the town crier David Oly? Hearing none, question being called, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. As I stated earlier, 8.10, I should have mentioned, has been removed from the agenda. So we're moving into 8.11, 8.11. Letter from the YARC, request for tax relief of commercial property tax. Do you have that in your pack, in your package?
I'm sorry. Which item are you on, Mr. Warden?
8.11.
Okay, so we're skipping 8.10?
I had it in my package to remove it.
So the letter from the NSFM, re-municipal consultation, is that on your agenda, Mr. Warden?
Yeah. Yeah, I had that, I had an email. The second here.
No, there's, I'm sorry. So I'm looking at the online agenda.
Yes.
And I'm not sure what the other councillors are seeing, but I'm seeing 8.1 be the letter from the NSFM, re-municipal consultation.
Yeah, yes.
Do you have that, Mr. Warden?
I have here, please take item 8.10 and 8.10.1 off the committee of the whole agenda.
But if you look at the online agenda now, Mr. Warden, 8.10 is is a letter from the NSFM to the province regarding municipal consultation on the post-COVID opening.
Okay, I apologize then, 8.10. Third mistake, woo, letter from NSFM to province, to province municipal consultation on post-COVID-19 reopening. So who has that on the floor?
I can speak to that.
Okay, go ahead. Councillor Durkey?
Um, during our last meeting, the of all the CAOs, wardens, mayors, board members and CAOs, there was a discussion with regards to the fact that opening up, the decision to open was very, to open up some of the restrictions was very last minute. And it left people, municipalities struggling to open facilities without any advance warning. And therefore, the letter was sent to the the provincial government to to ask them to collaborate with us on any updates and changes that are being made to the restrictions in order that we can ensure that the municipalities are ready for those changes. So I'll give you a quick example would be parks, when the government said that the park, provincial and municipal parks were open, and a lot of municipalities had done some work to close the parks. And it it took more than 15 minutes to try and get them open up because some people hadn't been maintaining them. So we, as in NSFM, has asked the government to, if you're going to roll out a plan for changes to the restrictions, could you please let us know in advance so that we can be prepared?
Okay. And go ahead, Victoria.
So what I understand from our municipal advisor is an acknowledgement that that was an oversight and that it appears that collaboration even within the province wasn't quite what it should have been when that announcement was made by Dr. Strang. So I'm not sure what councillor Durkey's hearing, but I'm hearing that moving forward we can reasonably expect to have an improved communications.
I'm not 100% on that one. I expect that during the meeting this evening, we'll hear more on the response to that.
Okay.
Is there any questions or concerns? And so on.
So for your residents, council, I, you know, where something might be announced that, you know, a level of opening might happen, it'll be important for us to understand the difference between may do something and shall do something and can do something. And so, you know, we're really working with the NSFM and the AMA to make sure that language is clear and that everybody's on the same page.
Also, at these NSFM Zoom conferences or discussions, if you folks or you councillors remember, councillor Cunningham brought up about the the school board budget and what the municipality pays. And he asked if it would be brought forward. It was, and there was some discussion and so on, and a couple of the other municipal units had some input and so on, and NSFM is going to ask the question. So I just want, I I couldn't remember if I told you or not. Go ahead councillor Cunningham.
Yeah, just for clarity, that was councillor John Cunningham that brought that point forward.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, that one, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so that's where we're on that, then back over on this. So 8.11. Letters from the YARC, request for tax relief of commercial property tax. You had that in your package. What is the wishes of the council? Councillor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Yeah, perhaps we could, through you, Mr. Warden, perhaps we could have Ms. Brooks talk a little bit about some of the options and to respond to the letter.
So, um, the municipality has a bylaw that will allow you for community groups to reduce the tax burden from a property that's assessed commercial down to a residential tax level. And so you have a Schedule A that's attached to your tax reduction bylaw. And you're not required to open the bylaw to do this, it would be an amendment to Schedule A. So it would be a motion of council to approve that the property in Arcadia that's owned by the ARC, that there would be a reduction in taxes from commercial to residential.
Councillor Cunningham?
Right, I'll I'll move in response to the letter and a recommendation to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the municipality district of of Garmouth, regular council meeting, that we amend the Schedule A of the tax reduction bylaw T-08301 to allow for a reduction of tax taxes where it concerns the ARC property and Arcadia from commercial to residential rate.
I'd, I'd second that.
Been moved by councillor Trevor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Daniel Allen. Was there any further discussion on the motion? Councillor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm just noticing that it says the purpose of the bylaw is to provide a reduction to nonprofit, community, charitable, fraternal, educational, if in the opinion of council, the organization provides a service that might otherwise be the responsibility of council. Is there anything going on at that building? Are there any services being provided at present is my first question. And my second question is, have the taxes been paid up to date thus far?
So I can take those questions, Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Um, so if I have received a recent report from the ARC with respect to the capital project they have visioned, they're working with federal funding partners to move that forward. But I did receive a status update on that. And as was shared with council, when they purchased the building from council, that project is moving forward, albeit they've admitted slower than anticipated. With respect to tax arrears, we are in the process of getting a tax payment schedule signed with them to bring them up to date on their taxes.
Anything further councillor Durkey?
No, thank you.
Is there any other concerns? If not, ready for the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. You want that recorded councillor?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Did you get that Liz?
John, I didn't hear, I don't see you, I can't tell.
I voted aye, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion carried, thank you. And and then Liz, that one's to the nays, to be recorded. Do you have that? Councillor Durkey? Okay, aye. That ends that part of, or that part of our committee of the whole meeting. We have, I believe, an in-camera. Victoria? We have.
Yes, we have three items, Mr. Chair.
So we'll break for, what, five minutes?
Could we have a little longer? Could we have a little longer than five minutes, Mr. Chair? We've been at this since about quarter to 10. Can we take 15 minutes?
Is that, that's fine by me, I mean, whatever. Okay, 15 minutes.
Okay, so. So I'm gonna end.
Yeah, 1:15.
So I'm gonna end this Zoom meeting and you'll have to jump back on again, okay?
Okay.
Will we use the same codes?
Yep.
That'll work, okay.
Okay.
15 minutes, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Warden?
Yes.
We probably should have had a motion, but that's okay.
Well, there's still enough, no, there isn't.
We probably should have had a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion to recess, if there's enough here.
Seconded by, seconded by Lauren, and all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Trevor's there, good enough. Motion carried.